Take a seat Scott. Alright, let's call to order the September 30th Littsboro Council Meeting. Is there anybody here from the Ministerium? That'll be a perfect time. Nobody's from the Ministerium, so let's just take a brief moment of silence. Alright, thank you. All stand for the pledge. Just briefly, would like to share with the public that council had executive session at 6:30 regarding some personnel matters. First thing on the agenda, council is the review and approval of meeting minutes from August 26.
Move to approve. Second.
A motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion approved. And I forgot to note, Councilman Ken Mobley is on the screen there.
Good evening.
Alright. The, we've got a few presentations to start off with here, so we're gonna get away from the mic a little bit here. The Wise Gas and Go, that Elijah.
We have a Yes, council, if you remember from last month, we did have a request for an extension to this month, and now this month, we do have another request for an extension till the October meeting. So I'd like to make a motion that we grant the request from the Wise Gas and Go applicant to to have them re- resubmit for next month. Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion approved. Alright. I do know we have folks in the room for this one. Moravian Manor. David, it's been forever.
Good evening. I'm Alex Peal with RGS Associates. With me this evening is Dave Swartly with Moravian Manor. We're here this evening for a stormwater plan that we submitted, which is up on the board here for some recreation improvements at Moravian Manor. So this is on the east side of the main building. What's being proposed is the reduction of some parking in this area and the construction of two pickleball courts, two bocce courts, and reuse of the existing bocce court, which is a little hard to see. It's right on the tree line there at the bottom for quates. As part of this project, the parking lots are being reconfigured to allow space for the pickleball and bocce courts. Also, there will be some reconfiguration of the existing sidewalk and trail network in that area, as well as a sidewalk that will connect from the existing pavilion. You can see there in the lower left to the bocce and the pickleball courts. As part of this project, we are reducing the amount of impervious cover that's on site, as well as a net reduction that was realized from other improvements that weren't done at the Manor in the past, which we were able to document. So we were not in a position to need to add more stormwater management facilities. Just the replacement of one existing stormwater management pipe that served a portion of the parking lot.
Alex, just high level question. I thought I knew this campus really well. Where am I there?
Yeah. So, to the right is South Spruce Street, West Marion Street, Stubbs Inn. That's the stormwater basin in the, the large grass area right there. So that, the south wing, so if you were to go north would be Lemon Street.
I got you. I had myself over in Warwick Woodland.
Yep, no, I'm sorry. That would have been a good start, place to start. Yeah, this is on the founders or the main campus. So I apologize. Everybody's probably trying to figure out where in Warwick Woodland.
I was like general Stutter.
Yeah, that's, that's a fair point. So yeah, so that's the portion of the site that we're in. That's pretty much what we have. I mean, that's the extent of the project. It did go through review process with staff and with the borough engineer received comments. We addressed those and, and our receipt of DMA's latest letter, which is just has to post financial securities as well as the stormwater agreement that would be done as part of the project. So both of those items, we have no issue addressing.
Any questions from council?
Yes, our engineer is here. So all of the comments that you had have been addressed adequately. Is the screening that's in place, I know that this is going a little bit beyond stormwater plan approval, but I'm just curious about the screening there on the alley between the pickleball courts and the back of those properties. Is that consistent with the original plan, the screening that's intact there?
Yeah, there, there's existing vegetation that will remain along the alley there. I think there's a few trees that are coming out, but it's largely consistent with, with what exists there now. We're also showing, I'm sorry, I didn't mention this, a privacy fence that will run along the alley side of the courts as well to create some more buffer there.
Okay, thanks Alex.
Any other questions, council?
Are there currently any pickleball courts on the campus?
No. These would be the first.
Do we need a motion? Or are there any comments from the?
Any questions from the public?
I didn't want to jump the gun. So I will move to approve the stormwater management plan for the Moravian Manor Recreation Area as presented.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion approved. Thanks Alex.
Thank you very much for your time.
Now I just have to move in over there so that I can come play bocce.
Alright, the third presentation, sewer laterals and water service line. Rob, you're on. You're on that?
Yeah, Steve, I'm gonna try and do double duty here, so bear with me. Just as a note for council, what you see on your screens, if you have the link there, it's gonna be slightly different what's up on the screen. I made a few changes today to it, so nothing major, but just if you see some slides that are different, it's just, it's me, not you. So, over the past year or so, the Water and Sewer Committee's been doing a lot of work on our ordinances, specifically how they relate to our infrastructure, who owns what, the laterals, things of that nature. I would say probably the biggest driver has been the lead service lines. So I think it was Mary who brought it up. It'd be a good time to educate council and the public just on a very high level what our water sewer laterals look like. So with that, we will start, and of course my computer freezes. So I apologize for everybody online, but the first thing we want to start with is, what is a service line and who is responsible for it? We'll go to slide number three, and that was not gonna show up either, but if you could see on your screen, it would be what the ordinance definition is for a service line. Basically, for the sewer side, the homeowner is responsible from the house, the whole way out to the curb, and then from the curb out to the main sewer line in the street is the responsibility of the borough. So there is a line of demarcation, which is basically the curb or the edge of the right of way. This slide would have been even better. There's a really nice picture that's basically, and I'll put this online afterwards, so that people in the audience wanna download it from our site, they can do that. But basically, it's a photo that shows, you know, the water main in the street, the line that connects it to the the cleanout right on the curb, and then into the house, trap, and then into the house. So it really kind of does a good job of illustrating where the ownership separation changes and what the infrastructure looks like. What is unique about Littit's Borough is that our ordinance kind of plays out this nice scenario where there's a vent, there's a cleanout on the street, and there's also a cleanout next to the house. However, that's not really the case all over the borough. There are some homes that are sit right on top of a sidewalk. There are some homes that were built before 1963 when the ordinance was adopted. And then you've got other homes that are newer in the borough that have, you know, front yards, all that kind of space where all those three things would be there. So it's really kind of a melting pot of what we have here. And the ordinance, like I said, it's dated from 1963, and it's very general and very broad when it comes to the sewer, sewer lateral things. So what we wanted to focus on really at this point was the sewer cleanouts. And the sewer cleanouts, when they're located next to the curb, right before the street, that's where Public Works can go in. They can use their equipment to clean out clogs, use their televising equipment to see what might be in there, do preventative maintenance, things of that nature. Like I said before, if those cleanouts aren't there, if they're underneath someone's front porch, buried in a mulch bed, underneath a tree, whatever it might be, the access isn't always there. And what that means is then the homeowner is calling a plumbing vendor, Klein, someone like that, to come into their basement with equipment and then clean out that entire line regardless of who's responsible for it. That plumber's doing all that work the whole way out to the main.
And do, does the borough pay part of that, or how's that work?
So we take it on a case by case. Most, most of the time, people use a reputable vendor, they can tell us where the clog was at, or they're in, call Public Works, and somebody will go out with them to inspect. So let's just say the house is 50 feet off the street. If they go 25 feet with their cleanout tool, they'll say, hey, well, it's, it's, it's on the homeowner's side. But if they go more than 50, they'll say, well, it's, it's with the borough's side, it's the borough's responsibility, then we'll pay the invoice for that plumber who did the work. They're essentially doing the work for us at that point. So I want to go down just a little bit more of a rabbit hole with the cleanouts here. If you could visualize, in a typical street, there would be a pipe that comes up right next to the curb, and there'd be a cap on it. And that cap would be what the Public Works would unscrew, put their tool down to do the cleanout. What we have noticed throughout the borough is there's probably about 100 or so properties where there is no cap, where the cap is broken, things of that nature. So what that does is every time it rains, every time it snows, what have you, all that precipitation goes down into our sewer system and then contributes to our flow. So if you follow Infomark's monthly reports, you'll notice whenever it rains, flow goes up. And when it doesn't rain, our flow goes way, way down. So it 100% follows the precept that we get throughout the year. So it's really important that we try to address the flow with those sewer caps some way somehow.
What do we typically do if we see the guys are driving by, they see there's no cap?
To date, nothing. We have not done anything. It's, it is a, one of the things Water Sewer Committee is working on is, do we need to change the ordinance? Because like I said, the ordinance is very broad. It doesn't really talk about, well, the sewer cap's missing, whose responsibility is it? It just says that this is where it stops, this is where it starts. It doesn't get that much detail.
I, I think that what does happen sometimes is a homeowner notices, and some of you out there may have dealt with these issues. The homeowner may notice that that cap is missing, and you can go up to the hardware store and buy one and, and put it on. But a lot of people, I think, just don't pay attention to that. They don't understand the implications that when that extra precipitation goes into the system, our percentage of the flow that's going to the wastewater treatment plant increases sometimes dramatically, and we're all paying for that. So we need to keep that inflow, that's called inflow, and then there's infiltration, or it may be cracks in the pipes and things like that, that we're, that we're dealing with, that's adding extra water to the system that's not truly sanitary water. So I think the Public Works Department is starting an inventory of where these caps are missing so that we can potentially make the caps available.
Mary, it's a great segue.
To you.
Yeah, great segue. Andy gave me a list just on Monday, and about 50 homes were missing the cap. Now, take that with a grain of salt, because they didn't go up and look at the sewer cleanouts that might be underneath a porch or in the bushes, stuff like that. They were just looking on the edge of the street. So it was around 50 or so that they found.
And in my case, my sewer cleanout is in my house, which means somebody would have to come in my house to do that cleanout, and that is not what you want done in your house.
So that was really it for the sewer cleanouts and the sewer side of things. Is there any other questions for the sewer laterals?
Are there any questions from the audience about this issue? It's a fun one to start out on tonight, isn't it?
I just had a quick question, Rob. In theory, the flow is only going one way. Correct?
Yes.
So.
Fingers crossed, yeah.
Theory, right. So is the reason for then the borough responsibility starting at a certain point because that's likely where it's gonna kind of start to be underneath the road, that why we take responsibility for that section of it?
That's probably one of the reasons, yes. Yeah.
Okay. Yes.
Yeah, the public right of way out. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
And townships and boroughs, everybody has like a different role for it. Some it's ownership, like ours, it's where it's joint, and some where the homeowner has the whole way to the, to the main. It all depends on the municipality.
Okay.
And the age of the municipality.
Thank you.
So we'll go on to lead service lines, on to the water side of things. Like I said before, that was really the main driver behind all of this. If you remember, a couple, three years ago, EPA and then PADEP came down with regulations where we had to take inventory of all the service lines that we have and then replace anything that had lead in it or a portion of lead. So that actually, the lead and copper rule actually began in 1991. And looking back through the borough records, East Second Avenue was a project where they applied for a grant, and they replaced all the service lines on East Second Avenue back in the early 90s, part of the lead and copper rule. So what that all means is that we have a history of doing this. Public Works, Andy and his guys, they've already done Spruce Street, obviously parts of Front Street, and they have some more plans moving forward where they're taking care of these galvanized lines as the years go on.
You said there was grants for these?
There was.
Replacements?
There was. Well, in the 90s, there was a grant that the borough received for it, yes. I would say most of the stuff out there now is through Pennvest, and it's, it's labeled as a grant, but it's really loans, usually 1%. And there's also other stipulations that go along with that.
Okay. Those grants are very hard to get and very costly to manage, so in many cases, they're not worth the additional obligations that come along with that money.
So as I said with the service lines, with the sewer, the water's basically the same way. There's joint ownership, it basically stops at the curb. However, the water's, for the most part, easier to find. There are some spots there where they are buried in the mulch, in the grass, things of that nature. But basically, what's at the curb is where the Public Works can go to turn off water service to a house if there's a leak or something of that nature. My next slide, and I lost my pages here. So by the numbers, we have about 4,500 water connections throughout the, throughout the borough. On the sewer side, Public Works replaces and or services on average about six sewer lines per year. And Public Works cleans, televises, and lines about one mile of sewer mains each year. That's what we do ahead of our paving schedule. When we look at the water by the numbers, and this is as of, these numbers are as of August 1st, we have 591 confirmed non-led. We have 207 galvanized requiring replacement. And then we have 3,104 unknown. So those are the numbers that we submit to the PADEP. In all reasonable, reasonable thoughts, the unknown really isn't unknown. It's just the process we have to go through to verify. It requires two verifications on each side of the ownership. So a lot of you up here, maybe the audience, received letters from us last year asking to send us a picture of what your service line is. That's only one part of it. We had a lot of responses from that. A lot of people sent us pictures and kinds of good information, but we also need to have written notification as well. So that's something we are, we're struggling to get on both sides. And then when you think about on the borough side, the water mains, the service lines are in the streets, we'd actually have to dig holes to determine, get a picture of what it actually is. So that's a, it's a big job to undertake at this point. We have been doing it based on notes that we've had, and he's really focused on sewer mains that need to be replaced and the service lines that are associated with it. So Front Street was a water main that needed to be upsized. It also had, making this a six, maybe a dozen, service lines had to be replaced, and that's how he was going about it up until this, up until this time. So with our updated list, with the stuff we got back from residents, we have a better idea, but still, there's 3,000 that we technically don't know about. In, in my mind, my opinion is it's, most of those, if not all of them, are probably copper. We just have to go through the steps to, to prove that over time.
Copper's okay.
Copper is fantastic. Yes. But there's basically, and this is my last thing I have, there's one, two, three, four, five types. We have lead pipes, copper, brass, plastic, or galvanized. That's the, the types. And the newer homes, a lot of those have plastic. Anything from definitely the 90s on is copper, but a lot of our records indicate even from the 60s and 70s, there's a lot of copper out there as well. So that was my presentation. Again, I apologize about it not coming up on the screen for those who are on remotely or in the room. I'll make sure I get it up on our website for people to see.
Thank you, Rob. You did a great job with the presentation, and we will get that posted up on the website, so you can go in and see good visuals in there to understand this issue. I believe we have, this will be our second annual report, which will be due in October. And then we have another year to document our inventory. And then we have to start doing replacements on a regular basis to get all of the lead or galvanized requiring replacement. That's essentially, you could have lead lining in a galvanized line, you don't know. So they're requiring that galvanized be replaced as well. So we'll have 10 years to get all of those done. It is the homeowner's obligation to replace your portion of that lead service line or the, of the water service line if it requires replacement. So we wanted to go ahead and just bring this issue to your attention so that people can be planning for it ahead of time, thinking about this is gonna be one of those costs. The borough will try to get grant funding where we can to help deal with issues like this. One of the reasons I wanted to bring this up with all of you today is also just because of the burden of our aging infrastructure. We are a very old community with very old infrastructure, and we're beginning to see that infrastructure needing repair and replacement. And like many other communities across the country, there is no slush fund we've been holding back on to, to do that. So again, just trying to help raise awareness about these issues as a homeowner. My house is dated around 1860. I need to get that sewer cleanout out of my house. That's gonna be a considerable expense. So we need to be thinking about these kinds of things. So thank you, Rob, for that great presentation, and Ken, do you have anything you want to add?
No, I think you summed it up well. Thank you, Rob, for a great presentation. Thanks, guys.
Are there any questions from the public on this? You could bring them back next time too, if you think about it. And report what your water service line material is to us if you haven't done that already. We'll probably start putting out regular reminders about that.
Alright. No other questions on the sewer and the water. Let's move on. We have nothing on ordinances, and we have five different resolutions to go through here. Ken, I believe you are up to talk about the first one, the park rules?
Yeah, Resolution 1007, Park Rules. Hey, guys, the Littit's Borough Park Committee has discussed formalizing some park regulations during their April and May meetings. And here are some of the key points that they'd like to share with us. They're asking that we follow some rules of conduct, and they be established in all borough-owned parks. And some of the, the rules are listed here. No persons allowed inside the park from dusk to dawn. No motorized vehicles in the parks. Dogs must be leashed, and dog waste must be properly disposed of. No littering, no alcoholic beverages, no smoking or vaping, and no disorderly conduct. So these have been talked about before, but they have not been formally adopted by council, and so the park committee is in full support of adding these rules, and they would like us to, to adopt this resolution tonight. Are there any questions or additions there for this resolution?
Will there be signs then posted at each park, or how are we going to get the word out?
That's the intent. It'll be part of the budget request for 26.
Thank you.
Other questions, council? Public? Not?
Okay. I'd like to move to approve Resolution 1007, Formalizing Rules of Conduct in the Littit's Borough Parks.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion approved.
Steve, as Rob prepares to share some thoughts about the next two resolutions, let me just give a brief preview. That the next two resolutions, 1008 and 1009, the borough has identified some construction, a construction project, which is the water treatment plant roof replacement and a vehicle purchase, which is a street sweeper. Both are eligible for a local share assessment or an LSA grant. The construction project and vehicles are, vehicle is needed to support operations within the borough. The grant application does take some time, so we would like to proceed with the application in hopes of hearing good news in 2026. Now for more details, Rob, would you like to just bring, bring those details to everybody's attention?
Sure, thanks, Ken. So both of these, the water treatment plant roof and the street sweeper, both came about because of all the work our staff does with our capital plan, our scorecard, tracking all the maintenance requests, trying to look into the future about what our needs might be. And these were two big ones I kind of came across, that they're big dollar amounts, as you can see in the resolution. The water treatment plant specifically, that roof is, it's concrete on one area, and it's chipping away. It's past its useful life. It's a, it's a part of the roof that covers a major part of the operation for the water plant. Infomark has identified it for us, and it's just a, it's an expensive capital project. That's why we wanted to use some, some grant money for it. Same thing with the street sweeper. We have one now. It plays a major role in our MS4 permit, but also just generally keeping the town clean. The timeline for both of these, we're gonna, assuming you pass the resolution, I'll imply for both of these by November 1st. We will not hear back until September of 2026, which means we won't We will not hear back until September of twenty twenty-six, which means we won't put this into our budget until twenty twenty-seven at the earliest, if, if they would get approved for grants. So you won't see these come November on any of the, the budget worksheets. This is a long-term planning and part of the process that we, we have to go through. I'll be answering any questions you might, might have on it.
Should we explain to the public why we need another street sweeper?
Sure. You want to do it, you want me to? You have firsthand knowledge.
I, I do a little bit. Well, I know all the ins and outs, but I know that it breaks down a lot.
Sure, yeah. So basically, the, the street sweeper has, while it, it does get the job done, there's been many more headaches with it as far as the manufacturer supporting Public Works, trying to do repairs. It was down for about, I'm going to say two weeks before the spring this season. That really kind of set us in a, in a pickle. It, it's frustrating for staff to use because it's always breaking down. And it's, it's such a big part of what they do, Public Works does from the spring, the whole way until leaf season. So we really need a piece of equipment that will do a little bit of better job, but also be more reliable from a repairs and maintenance standpoint locally and, and even just getting parts for it. You know, I, I think right now they take it out to Manheim for all this hydraulic work. It's just not like a regular truck. It's got all these hydraulics in it versus like an engine and, and other things like that. So it's, I don't want to say it's a lemon, but it's very close to it.
And just to complicate matters a little bit further, maybe Mary, you can speak to this a little bit better. But there are M S four federal requirements regarding the, the need to sweep streets as routinely as we do and also the type of street sweeper that we are required to have to meet their requirements and their accommodations. So the M S four being the municipal separate sanitary storm.
Storm sewer system. Very good, Christine.
Thank you.
You're ready to graduate.
I am.
Yeah, we, it is one of the best manag-, best management practices that gets us a lot of credit under the Chesapeake Bay program for reducing pollutants coming from the community.
Right.
So, street sweeping is very important from that perspective as well.
Rob, what kind of external support do you need for these grants? Are there legislators involved with these decisions? How do we maximize our application process to help these be successful applicant?
Sure. So typically what we do is right before we submit, we reach out to the local representatives, Malone, Fee, whoever else it might be, to their offices and they, they provide support through those applications as they move along. We, we use this, most recently we were working for the Lincoln and Cedar Culvert projects.
Okay, if there's no further questions, do we want to, we talked about the street sweeper quite a bit, but.
So Steve, can, go ahead, Ken. Can I go ahead and do both motions back to back then if there's no further questions?
Absolutely.
All right, I move to approve resolution one zero zero eight for a local share assessment grant of four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars to replace the roof at the water treatment plant.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion approved. Go ahead, Ken.
All right, now let's talk about the street sweeper. I move to approve resolution one zero zero nine for a local share assessment grant of three hundred and forty thousand dollars to purchase a street sweeper.
Second.
Your motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion approved.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Ken. Going on to the next resolution. Elijah, do you want to talk about the county planning investment area?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So the county planning has been going through a multi-year process to evaluate the regional growth boundaries, which is essentially where they feel that development should occur in order to preserve the farmlands and remaining natural lands and it's usually matched with water and sewer availability. So in the midst of this process, they're looking at areas that are particularly well-suited from a transportation and a land use basis to provide kind of unique opportunities. And they're selecting one and a few of them in each of their planning regions and we're in the northeast planning region. And they're actually asking for our support to designate the area of Kissel Hill south to the airport as one of those investment areas. It doesn't commit us to anything. What it does is essentially says that we're open to having discussion both with the county and with Warwick Township and Manheim Township about the future of the corridor. The, I should note that the Borough Planning Commission did recommend the Southern Gateway Vision Plan that was adopted. And we changed the zoning accordingly. That was back in, I think twenty-two is when we changed the zoning. And this area was designated as a planning area in our regional comprehensive plan. Because of that, Planning Commission reviewed at their meeting earlier this month and were supportive and are recommending approval.
Are we ready for a motion? Does anybody have any questions? Okay, I move that we approve resolution number one ten, resolution of the Council of the Borough of Littit's, supporting investment areas appropriate for small area planning as mentioned by Elijah or as described by Elijah.
I'll just amend that to be one thousand ten, one zero, one zero and second.
Oh.
Sorry.
Your motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Numbers always trip me up like that.
All right, the next one. Actually have Uber on here, I don't know.
Yeah, actually, I'm going to take this one. I'd like to make a motion to table this until a future time when council members have had more time to review the six hundred page document and we have an opportunity to put together a short presentation for you on the hazard mitigation plan. We may be ready for that next month, but I don't necessarily want to commit to that. That we need to have it adopted by, I think, August of twenty twenty-six. So we want to do it soon and get it done, but we also want to make sure that we take the time to review that plan and make sure that everybody's clear on what we are approving. So motion to table.
Second.
Your motion, table in a second. Ready in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approved, back with that. All right, I believe that's it with the resolutions. We have no agreement, so we're moving on to the council members forum. Ken, you're first on the docket.
Yeah, good evening again, Steve, and thank you. We have several items under the, the subcommittee. And first is the Infomarc report. Is Doug or Nate there tonight?
Yep.
He's approaching the mic.
Who is? Is it Doug?
I'd like to start out with my report with finance. We had a good month. We're thirty-five thousand five hundred eighty-nine dollars under budget this month, which brings our year-to-date total to thirteen six ninety-eight over. So we're catching up as far as finance goes. Page five of my report for capital projects, we received the final clarifier drive replacement this week. So that project is now complete. There are two remaining projects at the wastewater plant, which are the diffuser socks and the, the nitro-, the N I R check valve replacements. We are still waiting on parts from Denmark. They were supposed to be here by the end of the month and they still haven't shipped. So we're still hoping to get both those projects done in, in fourth quarter. And all of the, the water plant capital projects are complete. As far as compliance, both plants were in compliance for the month. The water plant, daily flow was down thirty-three percent due to the rain that we had in July. That's why there's such a significant difference. And the water plant production was up two percent. After hours callouts, we had two for the wastewater plant. One was a tank level alarm, one was a power outage and then we're not at the water plant. That's all I have unless anyone has questions.
No questions here, Ken.
Okay, thank you, Doug. I'd like to make a motion to approve the August Infomarc report for the Littit's Borough Water and Wastewater Facilities.
Second.
Your motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you, Doug. Steve, we have a couple other items here to address. One is the Front Street Water Meter Pit Pay App, number one. We're waiting on some more information, so I would like to table that until October. So I'd like to make a motion to table this particular application until October.
Second.
Your motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved, we'll table that.
All right, item number three, the Front Street Water Meter Pit Change Order Number One. Front Street, the change order is a credit back to us. The contractor used some of the materials that we had in stock and therefore they gave us a credit of twelve thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars, which is what they would have had to spend to do the same project. So we're basically just accepting that credit and having a lower cost for this particular project. So I'd like to make a motion to approve or accept the Front Street Meter Pit Change Order Number One, which is a credit of twelve thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars.
Second.
Your motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Item number four is also on Front Street and it's a Water Meter Pit Change Order Number Two. This is a change order that's related to the contractor requiring more money to provide the, the paving, the base paving for the ditches that were created and the work done on Front Street this summer. So it's an additional seventy-five thousand dollars to provide a base payment, base pavement for, for Front Street here. Any questions?
No questions here, Ken.
Okay, hearing none. I move to approve, beg your pardon?
No questions.
Okay, I move to approve the Front Street Change Order Number Two, which is an increase of seventy-five thousand dollars to complete the base pavement restoration of Front Street.
Second.
Your motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved.
The final item there is also, I'd like to table until more information is available and I'd like to table that till October. So I'd like to table, I'd like to make a motion to table manhole six and seven pay application number two.
Second.
Your motion is second, all in favor to table?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. Okay, Ken, anything else?
Yeah, two items here, the, the Littit's Borough Authority will meet next month. And then Mary, did you have anything for M S four for this evening?
I do. I also want to just make a quick comment on that Front Street Water Meter Pit. I believe, Rob, if I am recalling correctly from our water sewer committee meeting, that there was a commendation given to our water, for our Public Works Department for the work that they did on that project and it was seen as exemplary in, from a Public Works Department. Am I remembering that correctly?
You are, yes.
Okay, so I just want to give a shout out to our Public Works Department who took on that work and did a great job for us. Um, okay.
Thank you, Mary.
I, I do have something else then. We were scheduled to give the M S four report in October. And for those of you who have been holding your breath for that presentation, you're going to have to hold it until February because we are going to move to a February presentation schedule to align more with the reporting and record-keeping and allow for the, the contractor to provide a more thorough report and it'll also be in line with other communities in the county and when they do their M S four reports. So those of you holding your breath, if you can hold it until February, we'll hear that report then. That's all I have.
That wraps up sewer and wastewater or water treatment.
Moving on to streets and traffic.
All right, first one on our docket here is the street opening permit presentation. Do you want to take that over if it'll work, Rob?
I'm batting a thousand tonight. We'll, we'll put this up on the, on the website as well. Councilmember Shoville, you have it on your, on your agendas there. So the street opening permit application process, recent frustrations we've had with, from Public Works on, on my side as well, just with the contractors not following our guidelines, poor quality of work, not calling for inspections, et cetera, et cetera, led us over the past twelve to fourteen months, taking a rules and regulations that we had that was basically six bullet points and we turned it into a three-page document. So councilmembers, you can kind of see on, on your screen there, compare and contrast of the original and updated. We have made changes to insurance. We now will require contractors to reimburse us for parking meter, reimbursements if they're closing a street or working on a street where there's parking meters. Public notification, not only to the people that are being affected right at the, the work in the street, but also adjacent, down the street, next block over, those type of things. Providing us with a road closure plan so that Jared and, and the guys at the fire department can all see when a road's going to be closed, what the detour is. That includes sidewalks as well as roads. And, and probably the most important, not the most important thing, but one of the things we really wanted to do is really put more responsibilities on the permit holder for maintenance of that ditch for a very long time. So for example, if you go over a recently paved street or whatever and you get to a manhole and you kind of have that little bounce or, or dip, Andy and Tyler worked and said they want it up to one thirty-second of an inch of that manhole lid. So it'll make it very level, very nice. And, and these are all things that we can inspect. We can hold the contractor accountable for, charge them additional fees if, if they're not living up to, to what our expectations are. So it's much more robust. Like I said, three pages out of six. It was reviewed by our solicitor, Andy, Tyler, Jared looked at it, Elijah looked at it. So it's, it's been through the, the gauntlet, so to speak. There's nothing for you to vote on. Ordinance just says that we have to have an application process. It's just a policy change and we plan on reaching out to our contractors that typically get street opening permits tomorrow, letting them know the changes.
Rob, how does the public notices, they go out individually to homeowners? What's the, how's the public notification work?
Starting now it'll be written notification, door hangers and or signs on the street. A lot of times you'll see like a traffic cone with a, a post in it that says road closed tomorrow, those type of things. But now it'll be to adjacent homeowners and there also be a traffic plan that goes with it as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you, Rob.
All right, I've got a activity application for the Littit's Park Walk. It's going to be dated on October fourth, starting from eight AM to five PM. It's going to be located in the Littit Springs Park and the organizer is the Littit's Art Association. So it's basically a fine arts and craft show. Do we have any questions on that? I'd like to make a motion to approve the Littit's Park Walk on October fourth. Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Aye.
One other thing I just wanted to mention to you guys, the special events ordinance that Chief and Wes put on last month has been sent over to our solicitor to review, so we'll go from there.
The shortest.
It is, I think. I've done one, counsel. I'm done.
Okay, moving on to finances, Ken, back over to you.
Okay, thank you, Steve. We have two items of business tonight. One is the financial statement. Counsel, you have that in front of you. And what you'll see is that revenue is in line with what our expectations were and in line with budget. You'll also note that, that we're, we're not spending as much money. That, we also reported this during our mid-year report that we're, we're, our spending is under budget. At the mid-year point, we, we noted that our, some of our paving bids came in less than what we had planned on. And we also weren't sure if we were going to spend any money for the H V A C replacement for the Borough Hall Building. So paving still remains under budget. But what's in question is will we actually realize some of the expenses for the H V A C? I think that work has begun. Will we realize it in twenty twenty-five when we, will those invoices come across this year or next? So that's just something to point out, but otherwise we're, we're trending like we had forecasted. Okay, any other questions?
I have a question about the shade tree line item. It appears that the spending is minimal, 5% of what's budgeted to cover the grants. I think that were reimbursements that we give to residents for shade tree replacements, tree removal and so forth. Is that correct? Am I understanding that line item correct?
Rob, could you comment on that?
Sure, yeah, so that's total expenses for shade trees. That's probably reimbursements and plantings if there has been any yet.
And I know a little bit about this too, just on that they've been delaying doing it because their plantings are aligned with
In the fall.
Work being well. And also, I believe, I'm not sure if they're going to get through all of it because it aligns with the work that's been done on Front Street, correct?
That's correct. Typically, they target the fall because that way they, Jordan doesn't have to be out watering the trees over the summer when it gets hot.
Okay.
So the plant, the fall, the planting hasn't occurred yet, so that's part of it.
Okay, I noticed a lot of empty tree wells in the borough. And so I just wanted to raise our attention on that one and
They go, and just because I hear about this going on the walks, I mean, they have, I know they just went through, they have all, just last week, I believe they went through a whole walk on, they picked different streets. I'm like, all right, let's walk this, they just walked Front Street the other week. I do it on my walks with her too also, or take pictures of where tree wells are missing. I know they've picked, Jordan's not here, they'll pick different streets and they kind of go down through.
Okay. I'd like to see us get those tree wells filled if there's homeowners with obligations that could take advantage of this funding that we've allocated. That's all, thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Any other questions?
Nope, go ahead, Ken.
All right, hearing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve the financial statement and pay all our invoices.
Second.
Your motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Okay, and then the next item of business here is just each year we counsel approves the minimum municipal obligations that are prepared for us for our non-uniform staff and our police staff. And so we received notification this month. Kristen Brady has received that letter. And so the preparation for 2026 obligations have been made. And so for, for the non-uniform, Foster and Foster made the preparations and calculations. And they're advising that $251,950 is needed to help support the the minimum municipal obligation for the non-uniform staff for 2026. And Conrad Siegel prepared the calculations for the police department. And that number is $245,052 for 2026. But this is just something we do each year, and we appreciate the expertise of these two staffs to prepare this number for us.
And just to clarify, this is for the pension obligation, I think, might have missed that word. Cancel, just to clarify, it's for the pension obligation.
Yeah, the minimum municipal pension obligation, right. Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the 2026 minimum municipal pension obligation for the Littit's Borough non-uniform employees and the police department as advised by Foster and Foster and Conrad Siegel.
Second.
Your motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion approved.
Thank you, Steve. One last thing, finance has been meeting with each department over the last few weeks. We're getting great interaction from our department heads and their teams. Everybody is still actively reviewing and preparing their financial plans for the upcoming year. Would like just to highlight that October will continue to be budget season for us as we prepare for next year. November 12th, we'll have a public budget meeting at 5:30 there in Borough Hall. December 9th, we'll have another public question and answer period or session on the 2026 budget at 7 o'clock. And then we'll vote on the budget for 2026 at our December meeting. And that wraps up for finance.
And can you just repeat those two different dates for everybody?
Yeah, November 12th, 2025 for the public budget meeting. That's at 5:30 where we'll present the budget to Borough Council.
Yep.
And then we'll have a December 9th, 2025, public session for question and answer period where we'll be available to answer any questions about the budget.
The time on December 9th?
7 o'clock.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome, thanks, Steve.
All right, if nothing further on finance, Jerry Personnel?
Thank you, Steve. Two quick items, first, the Civil Service Commission update. Always like to educate the public on our various commissions and committees. The service, Civil Service Commission was established for the examination of applicants for positions in the Littit's Borough Police Force. So when an applicant wants to join the police force, there's an application process, examination process, including written and oral examinations. The Civil Service Commission made up of four members conducts that. So they are only operating when there's police officer transition. Rich Fulton's term as an alternative member of the Service Commission, Civil Service Commission, his term is completed as of today, September 30th, 2025. Rich has decided not to continue on the Civil Service Commission. He served for 10 years. And we want to thank him for his many years of service on the commission to help us review applicants for our police department. So just note that, that change. I'm in the process of looking for a person to fill that position. And so anyone out there who has interest in joining the Civil Service Commission, please be in touch with me. The other item is just an acknowledgement, as you know, our police chief has been involved with us now for what, close to six months as our chief. One of his goals is to continue to professionalize the department and make sure that training is available for all the officers. So he models that for the department. So he completed an educational milestone, one of his long-term goals. He has obtained his master's degree in administration and justice with a concentration on leadership and administration. You know, we look for people who have leadership skills to direct our departments. And so Chief Han has gone out and gotten a degree in leadership and administration from Wilmington University. Now, this is the interesting thing, additionally, he's graduated with a 4.0. Now think about that, going to school, having a family, and also leading a department and gets a 4.0 GPA. And he made the academic dean's list last each semester. So I want to congratulate our chief for his excellent interest in ongoing training and education. And congratulations on a successful educational experience. One other thing while I have the floor, one of the goals that we've had for the department is to make sure that our officers out in the community. The other day when I was downtown, I saw one of the officers walking Main Street. I talked to him, he said, he's really enjoying this experience, meeting with shop owners and talking to the public. Just wanted to continue to encourage that effort on your, on your half. I know you've been working that, and I'm glad to see that happening in the borough. That completes my report, Steve.
All right, Chris Planning?
Thank you, Steve. Well, the Planning Commission has been very busy and it looks like they've had some very good conversations about quite a few areas. And I see that Kyle Stauffer is here with us tonight. Would you like to get up and speak on behalf of the commission? Thank you.
Hey, good evening, I'm Kyle Stauffer, I'm Littit's Planning Commission Chairman. And I wanted to update you all on a couple of things we've been talking about in case we make some requests. So you have some background on what we've been talking about. The past meeting or two, we've been looking at the Littit's Run Revitalization Corridor. No properties in particular, just a corridor as a whole. And we've realized that there's some potential for some significant change in that area because there's some properties that are changing hands or may be empty at the moment. And myself and some of the other members are concerned that we may not have a solid vision for what we want in that area. There's two reasons for that. One is the master plan we have is from 2008-ish. So it's going on 20 years old. So some of the assumptions and data and vision we have is getting a little dated. And then the other reason it's been really successful. So some of the things that were originally proposed to be in that area have been built successfully in other areas. That's a great thing, but just means the vision for that area may be a little different. The other reason for that is that FEMA has changed the rules in terms of the floodplain from what we assumed in 2008. So the size and shape of the floodplain and the floodway are different, as well as the rules for what applies there. So it's now more restricted to build. And some of the ideas proposed originally may not be feasible anymore. So given that, we kind of feel, we haven't made an official recommendation, but there may be a need for a consultant to help us with some visioning, which we realize is not an inexpensive ask. So with budget season coming up, we wanted to ask you about that. The other thing is we may be asking you to remove the master plan from our SADO. It's actually adopted into our SADO, which is kind of unusual. So given that there's some maybe non-feasible recommendations, it's probably inappropriate to have that in there. So
Hi, what's the SADO?
Oh, sorry, subdivision and land development ordinance. The master plan is actually legally adopted as part of that, which is very unusual.
Elijah and I were talking earlier about the, why it was adopted because I was on the planning commission back then. And a lot of it played in part, form-based code was being developed at the same time. And the master plan was aligning with the base codes. That was more of a model representation of what you're looking for with base code at the time. So that's at least my recollection from that timeframe, why it was put in there.
Okay, makes sense. And we're going to be continuous discussion next planning commission meeting. So feel free to come out, folks, if you have any interest or council members.
Yeah, it's, I'm glad you guys are looking at it. It's obviously something I was already close to for years, but it's, you always got to be ahead of what could happen.
Yep.
Example, Wilbur, we had no idea that Wilbur was going to leave. I stay a couple of steps ahead of that. Look at exactly what, got to look at the master plan so you can look at what modifications you got to make Jordan, align with that master.
Yep, exactly, we're trying to be proactive here, so. Sound good? Any questions, thoughts from council?
I would just recommend to any council, if you've got questions or public asking about different things, go to the, go to these meetings, planning. All educated on everything that has to happen. And people realize it doesn't happen overnight.
I want to thank the Planning Commission for their working and thinking about visioning in the future. Planning Commission meetings oftentimes are taken up with just dealing with the zoning and planning issues. And so you're now beginning to think about the future and how that, what impact planning will have on the future of the borough. So thank you for your leadership in doing that. It's important the public knows that you're thinking ahead.
Thanks, Jerry.
Thus the name, planning.
Yeah, thus the name, planning.
And the Planning Commission meeting is?
Second, first Tuesday of the month. So October 7th, yes.
Yes, 7 o'clock here.
One week from today.
7 o'clock here.
Today, right here, 7 o'clock.
One of the most exciting committees.
Very exciting, yes.
Thank you, Kyle.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Kyle. And I'd just like to recognize Mike Smith and Todd Dickinson, who are also in the audience tonight, who serve on that committee. We appreciate their support and hard work as well.
Anything else, Chris?
That's all I have, thank you.
All right. Mary, zoning and code?
Of course, I have a report tonight and I just put candy in my mouth. So my report is that the zoning and codes committee has been meeting regularly. Couple of things to report out from that. The Historic Area Advisory Committee was asked to go out and take a look at some of the historic accessory structures in the community. Because we have recognized the conditional use approval, demolition approval process for garages is often just met with approvals. So it's having to jump through hoops that we're not sure are really needed. So they have, the Historic Area Advisory Committee has agreed to go out and take a look at those structures. So if you see people walking around in the back streets, taking a look at buildings, it may be our advisory committee members. And we'll be coming back with recommendations on that in the future. That's all I have.
All right. Here, end building and grounds?
Yeah, thank you, Steve. Let me defer over to Elijah. Elijah, anything you'd like to share there?
I think the only thing I would report out of the September Planning Commission, or excuse me, Parks Committee meeting is that they reviewed their budget requests. We finalized those and they'll be going over to Rob here shortly.
Thank you, Elijah. That's it for us, Steve.
Mary, regional?
Yep, just want to make an announcement that the Warwick Region Joint Meeting, which is a meeting of the partners in the region, is going to be on October 30th at 7:00 PM, hosted by Warwick Township. It's Elizabeth Township, Littit's Borough, Warwick Township, Warwick School District to discuss mutual issues in the region. We are also planning for our next meeting with the partner communities on advancing the regional comprehensive plan. We've begun looking at the, making a list. We have a list of the large employers in the community that we want to start gathering together on conversations around the affordable housing, housing, I'll just say the housing, accessible housing issues. So that's all I have on that unless, do you have anything else, Elijah?
I think we also talked about transportation as well, that it would be housing and transportation that we were talking with them.
Housing and transportation, yes, thank you.
So I have a question about this. It says here that the representative, representatives to discuss mutual issues in the region. In addition to the things you mentioned, how, what other issues get discussed? And how do those issues get, get talked about in our community? For, for example, I think Littit's Borough, as we know, is an economic generator for our community. And the outlying regions use our services a lot, the streets and infrastructure. I'm just concerned that we find a way for our borough to be able to manage some of the growth issues that are going on in our community. And that our partners in the region participate with us, us in those kind of issues. So how do we get issues presented to this regional joint meeting? What's the, what's the procedural process for that?
I believe we're putting together an agenda jointly. So if you have items that you would like to see on the agenda, you can let Elijah know. Steve can probably, or Elijah can speak to what's happened at these meetings previously. We've canceled the last three.
I think it was almost the last three years because they were suspended during the development of the regional plan. And then the last one was scheduled for February, I believe. It's always on the fifth Thursday. So it happens twice a year. Partially, the one in February was because it was so early in the process after adoption, there wasn't, they wanted some time there for everyone to get their feet underneath them. So yeah, if you do have proposed discussion points, you can route them through me and I will share them with Brian. Typically, it is developed collaboratively, but the hosting municipality gets kind of the final say on what goes on the agenda.
Yeah, and it's, I mean, I've been to many of those meetings over the years and it's, you know, it's based around the regional comp plan, obviously. And it's the group to discuss through some of those different issues. There's a multitude of different things that people might bring up, certain activities, certain things that are priorities they're focused on, just to make sure we're jointly looking at issues. I mean, I'll say from a planning perspective, if Warwick's got this huge development going right on our border, they're going to share with us. Obviously, if there's traffic impacts that are going back and forth. So it's a lot of different issues that are shared that are aligned with the regional comp plan.
Yeah, the other thing I'll say, Jerry, is that each of the communities provides its own benefits to our region. So for instance, Elizabeth Township, we rely on heavily for farmland and woodlands. They are, they are the keeper, if you think about the If you think about the, the concept of the transect, where you're going from the very urban area where some services are provided, and then you move through, and that would be us. And then you go through and you've got the more suburban area where they have their role to play within a broader community. And the same thing with Elizabeth Township with the game lands and the farmland and things like that. So yes, we do provide a really critical role, but each of the communities has a critical role to play, and we need to be working together to making sure that we're providing the breadth of services and amenities. You know, we couldn't have, we couldn't put a hospital in the middle of downtown Lititz.
We couldn't put a big Target shopping center. So it's, I think the message you're saying is it's not just Lititz, it's a contributing factor of all of us working together.
I understand that, but I think we have a unique opportunity in this region to continue to work together, not, other regions really don't do that very well. So these, these, these entities, Elizabeth Township, Lititz Borough, Warwick Township, and the school district are all positioned really well to have these great conversations. I'm just wondering how, how the public and other people get the issues to these groups so that there can be conversation about how our communities continue to thrive.
Well, that is the purpose of this meeting. It is a public meeting, so the public is welcome to come, October 30th. It'll be at the Warwick Township Building on Clay Road, 7:00 PM, and an agenda will be posted before the meeting. Yep.
Hey, Mary or Steve?
Yes, Ken.
Can you, do you know if this will, there'll be a link so that we can attend remotely? Do you know if that will be available?
I am not sure if Warwick has set up quite the way we are. I can definitely ask Brian about that, though.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I'm not sure if they've, I know a lot of municipalities have eliminated the remote solution, I'm not sure if they have.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Moving on, you have Scott's report. Scott is here, if you have any questions for him, or if there's anything you want to Mayor, we missed you at the beginning. I know you had some other activities going on, anything you want to share?
Was at the Discover Lancaster in a meeting where they discussed the, where the tourism is in Lancaster County right now. And so we had a nice meeting at Landis Valley Farms, and they talked about the stuff that they were going to do for the 250th anniversary coming up of America, and that was about it for that meeting. But for the rest of the month, three Saturdays ago, I welcomed the participants of the 5K Pretzel Trister Run, and I was the pace bicycle. And they had about 250 participants, and I went very well for the rec center. Also, this past Friday and half a Saturday, I was in Freeport, Illinois. I talked to you last meeting and just said that they were interested in becoming a sister city, so I thought I'd go out there and visit them. So I visited, spent Friday and met a bunch of their community leaders, their, their mayor, and did some touring of their, of the city, and I will, I didn't have time to get a report together, but I will have that for October. And they're like, where Lititz is about 25, 30 years ago, and they're looking to revitalize their town, and they're called Pretzel City, USA. And believe it or not, their high school is, mascot is the pretzel, and they are called the pretzels. And as, back in the day when there was a Lititz High School, they were also named pretzels. And I just, the next time, I'll have some other sayings, but I have a T-shirt that they gave me that says, "But you can eat us, but you can't beat us." So I, I had a really, I had a really good time out there, and I will have a little bit of a slide presentation for you next time, and I think it would be beneficial to give them a hand and leave them come and see us also. So that's where that's at.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Steve, you have anything?
I just want to start by following up to two items that we discussed last week. The first, there was some community input about parking meters, some lag time with credit card processing. We reached out to Civic Smart, which is the, the organization that manages the backend software, expressed some of the concern that was expressed to us. They went into their backend server and, and did what they called an optimization. So they said, whatever they did, it may increase some processing speeds. They said likely you might see a 20 to 30 second processing. They said there are some influences outside of their control, like different banking institutions that could also impact the speed by which the meters process credit card payments. But they said they've flipped every switch on their end to make sure that the, the credit card processing of the meters is done as quickly as it can be. And just for council's awareness, I pulled some backend data. For the first six months of this year, 63.5% of all metered minutes were paid for with cash or coins, I should say, and about 36.5% were paid for by credit card. Just some, some context of how people are using the meters. The second item that was a follow-up to last week, Council member Carpenter had mentioned it, the special events process. The, the presentation that we gave publicly last month at council, we also held a, a public listening session and presented that same presentation. The audience members were different community members, members of the merchant community, people who are common sponsors of special events, just to make sure that they were aware that this discussion was happening, an opportunity for them to have a voice, to give any input to some of our vision, some of their ideas, concerns, et cetera, through, through their lens. So we got some good feedback. You know, obviously, as she had mentioned, that the, the process is continuing along, but I felt it important that we had some community engagement from the stakeholders that have a bigger piece of the special events than some others. So that meeting went well, and certainly will continue to update them as things progress. The last item, I just wanted to touch on September, our officers not only were involved in the planning, but also staffed several special events throughout the community, a couple of the bigger ones, the Italian Fest, and most recently, the Beer Fest. I just wanted to share some, some feedback that I got from community members, especially from the, the Beer Fest. We received a lot of good feedback from attendees who expressed their appreciation for the work that the officers did, not only in ensuring the safety of the event, but also the interactions that the officers had with different community members and people who are visiting our community. One person had came up to me and had expressed his observation of the way that our officers were interacting with community members, engaging in conversation, just being visible, more than just a security force, but more of a community element. He had made an observation that he attends a lot of these different types of events throughout different communities, and he recognized that the way that our officers were there and engaging with the community was different than what he sees at every other community. So I thanked him for that comment, and I just felt it was worth sharing. So that's it, unless there's any questions.
I have a question. I know that for our major events downtown, we have a emergency plan, I think Mike and his team worked with that. Is there anything done for the schools? I was at a couple of football games, there's a lot of people there. We had police officers there, and we had security officers there. I just wonder what, who's responsible for, for emergency, if something would happen during a, during a major event like a big football game? Is it the school or is it the borough?
I mean, the school has certain administrative safeguards they can put in place, you know, such as, you know, the ticketing and making sure that the people are vetted as they're coming in. But, you know, at the end of the day, any response to an emergency that would be a police, a fire, or an EMS-related type situation is going to come down to us. And we would certainly work with their security staff, their building and ground staff to make sure that it's working together because it is a collaboration. But some of the bigger events, like the football games, you know, there is conversations that we have with the school before every football game to make sure that we're supporting them in the best way that we can and that we're aware of whatever needs that they might have for the event.
So there were two police officers at that, that game. Are they contracted? How's that work in terms of, of cost and is that?
So they're detailed to the football games, they're, they're not on-duty officers. They are officers that are brought in exclusively to, to staff that event. And then those overtime costs, we recover 100% through the school district through, through reimbursements.
I think those events are another good place for officers to be noticed, move around the commu, move around the event, get to talk to people. It's another way to support the idea of, of community policing, you know?
I agree.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jared. All right, next we have the Managing Director's reports. We have both Elijah and Rob's in there. Start with you, Elijah, anything you want to add or focus on?
Sure, last, at the last meeting, it was requested to look into the traffic study for Warwick Woodlands, which as we discussed was up to phase three, currently they're at phase two. According to Jay's State's study, there was 600 cars per day measured on Sixth Street. In the study, it didn't have a hour-to-hour breakout, but it did have the peak hour projections, which would be two hours. The two peak hours, when you add them together, are 638. So there's 22 hours in the day that haven't been achieved by, as put forth by the traffic study. So right now it is operating, I would say, in line with what was projected, and we would have to evaluate that further. I did suggest today, when I talked to him about the stormwater plan, that we may need to tou, touch on the traffic study when they submit for phase three, because its planning horizon was 2025.
Good. Seen a lot of those traffic studies over the years, and you always think it's a magic, you know, play with numbers, but to see it actually pretty close, so.
Well, it's, I would say it's greatly, they designed it with much more cars, because that was basically the, the high watermark for the day would be the two hours.
Yeah.
So there's 22 hours that they designed it for that we haven't seen the traffic for yet.
You said those numbers last month, I remember during those discussions, or shortly it's gone already, I mean, that was a big discussion of how much traffic was going to be on there, so it's much less used than I think anyone planned.
And I think the one thing to keep in mind is, as proposed, phase three was a very dense development. It had apartments, as well as first floor, commercial and retail, and then the stormwater basin that is currently being filled in along Orange Street is going to be a pad site for either office, retail, or restaurant.
Once they get through doing the independent living and the rest of the stuff in the close, that loop area.
Right, yep.
Are they going to add that, extend that, that's going to be a road then through?
It's going to be into essentially a parking lot. It will have a connection, but think of it sort of similar to like a, a restaurant or a, like a CVS or something.
That pad.
Okay, gotcha.
Other than that, just updates on Norfolk Southern. I heard that the legal had a couple of questions on our responses. Neil from Norfolk Southern, who's our contact, thought they were pretty simple, but that was two weeks ago, so we're still waiting for theirs, but he's positive that we should get that soon. The Greenlight Go Project was completed for Broad Street, this was at Sixth and Second. The, a lot of it you probably don't notice unless you're looking really close. The detection was changed to radar, which is more effective. The signal heads were large. The, probably the biggest thing is if you're coming east or west on Sixth Street, the striping at Broad Street is now head-on so that you don't have to crane your neck so much. Because of that, Scott, Jared and I were out last week, because there's a couple of places where parking is technically allowed, and if someone parked there, it may have conflict. So we're looking at probably amending the streets and traffic ordinance again to do a little bit more parking restriction in that area, just to kind of head off any potential issues.
All right, Rob?
Sure, just a few things to add. First, Borough Hall HVAC, obviously if you guys are in the back hallway, you saw some, that hallway's kind of a mess right now. Demo Day is scheduled for October 9th. Actual delivery and install is to be determined, but I think it'll be very close to that November 9th, or, I'm sorry, October 9th, October 9th date. Our website's launch date is December the 3rd at 9:00 AM. We've been receiving weekly updates for all the work behind the scenes that Civic Plus has been doing. So far, everything is fine, but obviously, the December 3rd date will be the, the true tell. And two more things here, the Northern Interceptor, that project, obviously, we, we talked about Manhole Six and Seven delay in that last pay app. The last phase of that project, which is the lining from Manhole Nine down to Five, will take place in 2026. And last but not least, I believe leaf collection, Andy's planning on sometime in October, tentative, I believe, is October the 13th, but that is subject to change.
Got to know.
Did you, okay. Could be. Sometime in October, I know, and he put out a notification, so that's all I had.
Okay. Council, any questions, Rie though, then?
And leaf goes till when, December?
Sometime in December, yes.
When it snows?
Probably.
Or snow?
Yeah, he usually puts out an email message and Facebook about when it'll be, when the last one, it's when the leaves come down.
Right.
Okay. Moving on, the final thing, any, from the public, any questions, comments about any topics that have not been discussed tonight? All right, if not, item number 10?
Actually, could I just comment here, because I think it's worth pointing out to those who may not have heard about it or seen it, that one of our longstanding merchants on Main Street is going to be retiring, the Tiger's Eye. Shop has been there for about 29 years. Nate Dean and Gaylord have decided that it's time for them to move on to the, we'll call it the third chapter of their lives, because both of them had very successful careers otherwise, and, and for a second career came and opened up this wonderful shop on Main Street. And they have been not only a huge success in and of itself, but just a boon to downtown. And, and it's, they're going to be missed, they're going to be missed downtown. So we'd like to congratulate them on all their success and wish them the best in their, in their next adventure.
Thank you for bringing that up. And with that, I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Second?
Your motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Night, everyone.